This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council to order at 7 o'clock on this Tuesday, June 23, 2020. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed, and I have quite a lengthy list this evening. Our condolences go out to the family of Ralph A. Grunland upon his passing on 15 March 2020. Mr. Grunland served in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. Condolences go out to the family of Albert Joseph Labonte upon his passing on April 9, 2020. Mr. Labonte served in the combat operations throughout Central Europe in Company A, the 394th Infantry Regiment, 3rd Army, and the United States Army during World War II. Condolences also go out to the family of Benamino R. Gallo upon his passing on April 10, 2020. Mr. Gallo served in combat operations, the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. Condolences go out to the family of Raymond F. Rounds upon his passing April 20. April 12, 2020, Mr. Rounds served in the United States Navy during World War II. Condolences also go out to the family of Joseph Oliviero Jr. upon his passing on April 16, 2020. Mr. Olivieri served in the United States Air Force during the Korean War. Condolences afforded to the family of Frederick W. Westman upon his passing on May 9, 2020. Mr. Westman served the United States Army during the Korean War. Condolences go out to the family of Calvin C. Overlook upon his passing May 13, 2020. Mr. Overlook served the United States Navy during World War II. Condolences go out to the family of Stephen T. McLaren upon his passing on June 1, 2020. Mr. McLaren served the United States Army during the Vietnam War. Condolences also go out to the family of Richard T. Roach upon his passing June 13, 2020. Mr. Roach served in the 5th Army, United States Army during the Vietnam War. Please have a moment of silence. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody again on Zoom. Just want to remind everybody that this meeting is being held pursuant to Governor Baker's March 20, March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law under Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extents possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so also via Facebook Live. And also to remind those that are on the Facebook Live, you may comment all you want and ask questions, but we can't answer you or even see what you're posting on Facebook. Also want to remind everyone that this is, again, airing live on Facebook. On that note, we will begin with Item A, approval of our minutes from our previous meeting. So moved. Is a motion and there's a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote, and all our votes this evening will be by roll call.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
I do not have any announcements this evening. I do not have any proclamations to read. I'm going to defer to, since the time being 7:05, to go right to public hearings. And I will call the 7:05, the time being 7:05, I will call the public hearing open on Order FY20055, Transfer Order Capital Appropriations. At their meeting held on May 12, 2020, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2-0 to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee voted 3-2 to recommend approval at their meeting held on May 26, 2020. The Community Preservation Committee voted on May 27, 2020 to approve $350,000 towards the Memorial Building line item contained herein. This measure has been duly advertised for a public hearing in the enterprise and on the town's website. This measure may be finally considered pending adoption of the amendment amounts based on the community preservation funding vote. So I will refer to the town manager for an explanation on the appropriations, and then I'll open it up to any questions from the public. I know Mr. Dutton is here. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I will go through these quickly so that you have a sense of the requests that are being made. Obviously, Finance Committee and Budget and Finance have approved these, but are recommended these for approval. But let me, excuse me, go through them. It will require, as the President pointed out, it will require an amendment to the CPC line from 550 to 350, as under the source of funding, and then under the use of funding, also a corresponding reduction from 550 to 350 under line 192.09. So on the use of funding, I'll run through them very quickly. There's $80,000 for a townwide phone system upgrade. This will give the town the ability to use IP phones townwide, so that the phone system will be centralized, and all of the calls will be on an IP basis. It'll fix the problem. We've had a problem with the fire department phone system for a couple of years now, pretty severe problem. It will fix that. It will also, if, and hopefully not when, but if we have to work remotely again, it will allow us to do that seamlessly. People will be able to simply bring their phone with them, plug it into their computer, and work from home seamlessly without any discernible difference to the people calling in. So that's the townwide phone system upgrade. Police Department is, or through IT, is looking for a video system server. It's critical that we have documented video of a number of things that go on the police department, so that will allow us to continue to do that. Fiber projects through the town buildings, we got a grant through the state to install fiber as part of our overall water project, water treatment plant project, and the state has contributed a little over $80,000 to that. So this is essentially a match to that. It will provide fiber to the water treatment plant, also the wastewater treatment plant and fire station too, which will enable us to get rid of the monthly Comcast charges for those facilities. Computer upgrade and equipment, I think it's no secret, we're doing a townwide upgrade mostly so that we can accommodate changes in technology. So that is simply the hardware upgrades required across the town. I will add that we have done a fair amount of upgrades throughout the town to additional purchases of laptop computers during this COVID crisis. Those will be reimbursed through CARES, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the meeting. Street lighting, LED streetlight conversion project is pretty well-known. The council has voted seed money for that. This is the balance that will finish out the project. The installation of that is currently going on, and we should see some substantial savings on that over the course of the next number of years. Memorial, the two line items next, Memorial Building, a water and sewer transfer, as well as a transfer from CPC funding, will help offset the Memorial Building rehab cost. The estimated cost of that is 1.7 million. This is somewhat urgent because we will have to return money that we have appropriated and has been bonded if we don't spend that or commit to spending it within the close of the fiscal year. So that is why that is somewhat timely. Building exterior maintenance, we've got a number of issues, not major issues, but the Town Hall building, as well as the Academy Building, it's time for some touch-up, both painting. Certainly, the Town Hall needs some window replacements, not replacements, window painting, and caulking and repainting, as does the Academy Building. So that is there for that purpose. Library HVAC is completely broken. We had expended some money through Green Communities a couple of years ago to replace one half of the building's HVAC system. This is essentially the other half of that system. Fire Station, Station 1 feasibility study, as the council knows, we've gone out, issued an RFQ for a designer to bring us through feasibility phase. What we actually got were a number of very well-qualified firms. One was, has been tentatively selected, and we're finalizing a contract pending this vote. And obviously, we're looking to move Fire Station 1 out of its current location and find a better location and a better facility for that equipment and those firefighters. Police Department, a standard replacement of two police vehicles, and then the remaining down to, well, all of the remaining items are lease payments pursuant to our lease program for both police-fire, all police-fire in the Highway Department. So that is it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public regarding this order for capital improvements? Any questions from the public? I see, let me see if I can see any hands up. I don't see any hands up other than my fellow counselor.
I see Dr. Hunt waving.
Oh, where's the, I don't see him on here.
You wouldn't see him on the side. He's waving his hand like physically. He needs to unmute himself.
There he is. Mr. Hunt, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I just wanted to clarify that the CPC reduced the recommendation for the Memorial Building to only cover accessibility parts of the projects, and then only construction parts. We also strongly recommended, and will include in the award letter, that a maintenance plan be developed for that building to be submitted prior to any approval of funding. We want to ensure that our money, your money, the town's money, is in fact appropriately used for maintenance and keeping that $350,000 investment up to speed. So I just, there's a lot more in that particular recommendation than just money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general questions from the public? General questions from the public? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishes to speak in favor? Anyone from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this order, capital appropriations? Anybody here wishes to speak in opposition? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I'll open it up to any questions from the counselors. Counselor Lind, you've had your hand raised for once.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure I got in the queue. So my question is, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to recommend the approval of the measure, but the Finance Committee voted 3 to 2 to recommend approval at their meeting. I'm just curious why it was that close, if there's anything that anyone could enlighten me on?
I would enlighten you if I knew. I think they had actually questioned some of the Memorial Building expenditures, but I think that we're working on what we need to do there. We're working off of an estimate that was generated professionally. It wasn't generated by us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the counselors? Mr. Colin Bodas, I see your hand, see your hand up. Yep.
I'm just wondering what, I know there's been a lot of concern about what seems like the most current plan for the interior of the Memorial Building. I'm wondering if the CPC funding is binding, they recommend that it be used for specific purposes. I'm wondering if that's binding, or whether the town manager would have discretion to use that for other than what the CPC suggests.
That's a great question, and I would say that that is binding, that I, you know, once the CPC makes a recommendation, the council can approve it, or not approve it, obviously. And if you approve it, then I think that, in my opinion, that recommendation, if adopted, then comes with the restrictions that the CPC has tied to that money, which, quite frankly, are certainly not onerous.
Can I follow up with that?
Sure.
But that, so it seems like the CPC recommendations might contradict the use of water, if we're using water and sewer funding for this, it seems like then we're going to go ahead with splitting up the interior space for offices. I'm wondering if we approve this capital transfer, are we then kind of locking in the use of that space for the water and sewer department offices?
So I can only give you this, and that is that we are, other than required bathrooms, we are not intending to create any, you know, permanent structures that would, you know, any office space would be done using cubicles or desks or so forth. We're not intending to carve out rooms at all.
Any other questions from the counselors to the town manager regarding this? Counselor Fitzgibbons?
Not, well, I guess it's not so much a question on this, but just an observation to piggyback off of what Dr. Hunt said. I've had an order waiting at the Budget and Finance Committee for a long time now, for good reason, because we just talked about the Academy Building and maintaining a separate fund to maintain that. I see we're moving forward across the rest of the town with, you know, maintaining the outside of the Town Hall, the Academy Building. Dr. Hunt referenced, you know, making sure there's a maintenance plan for the Memorial Building. I think it's time now that the town manager come up with a plan to talk about maintenance of all of our town's capital assets, and how we do that, and how we stay on a reasonable budget to do that going forward each year in addition to having a capital plan. Thanks.
Any other questions from the counselors regarding these, this transfer order for capital appropriations for FY20055? I don't see any other hands up. I'm going to close, close the hearing now at 7:19 PM. And now we're acting under the order. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second, is a motion to approve, and there's a second. Is there any discussion as amended, I believe, as amended by the?
Amendment is indicated.
Yeah. So there's a motion to amend, and there's a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, it does require a roll call vote, or the amendment is just reducing the amount in our original packet from 500 to 350 for the Community Preservation Committee. It does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Now, we're acting under the main motion. This does require, we do have a motion and a second. This does require a roll call vote. This is the actual vote of the appropriation.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Okay, the time now being 7:21, we'll move on to our second public hearing this evening. I will now open the public hearing on the FY21, FY2021 budget hearing. This hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website. All orders relative to the FY21 budget may be finally voted on this evening and are itemized under L, Legislation for Action. So we'll have the public hearing now. When we get to Legislation for Action, we will be taking votes on the individual budget orders. So the public hearing is now open. I'll just refer to the town manager on the FY21 budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will give it only a short preface because, as I have mentioned, and as everybody knows, much of our assumptions on the 2021 budget are built on numbers that are generated by the state, but have not been released through the state budget because the state budget hasn't even begun to have a discussion on Beacon Hill. So we're doing the best we can knowing those constraints. So I'll just say that since March, for us, about March 16, we've been meeting those challenges of remote work and split shifts, and virus prevention, certainly in our town offices, and throughout the public safety departments. But we've continued to provide the services that we need to provide, and as is the case, as I mentioned, with all the municipalities in the country and throughout the world, we face the challenge of trying to predict the next 12 months without really knowing exactly what the next 12 months is going to look like, or certainly much less so than we have in prior years. So our task is particularly difficult because we're missing that critical information, Chapter 70, Chapter 71, which the school district relies on, certainly our local aid numbers that we rely on, on the townside. So we've tried to use, you know, what are, you know, non-traditional ways of trying to estimate our revenues in order to get us to the point where we have a number that we are somewhat comfortable with. As part of trying to develop a balanced budget, it's balanced only in the sense that our proposed revenue sources meet our proposed expenditures. In order to meet the proposed revenue, we are proposing transferring a million, a little over a million five from our stabilization account. So this is essentially from a homeowner's perspective, this is, you know, taking money out of your savings account or your retirement account in order to pay for your yearly expenses. We normally would never do that, but what we have told our bargaining units, our employees, is that we are going to make sure that we fully fund our stabilization account in the event that we have a significant downturn. Obviously, this is more significant downturn than we had ever imagined, but the principle, I think, still holds true. We put away money to make sure that we could do as much as possible to make sure that they have a job and maintain. So out of that million, a little over 1,500, roughly half of that is allocated to the school, roughly half of that is allocated to the town in proportion to the amounts of the entire budget that the respective, you know, town and school make up. So really, I can tell you that there are no major changes to the budget. There's no major work changes, no major initiatives that we are looking to do. Obviously, all of those things are now off the table for at least the next 12, 13 months while we ensure that we can recover from the downturn. We have not built into this budget any reserve objectives. In the original council resolution on the 2021 budget, we had made a point of essentially budgeting for 1.1 and 1/4% reserve, and that money is essentially the money that comes back to us, is free cash that funds the capital purchases or the capital improvements, most of which you just voted. So a lot of those financial sort of frameworks set up in the budget resolution, for obvious reasons, are somewhat out the window right now. Our focus is to make sure that we continue to do the critical work that we need to do with the limited amount of staffing that we have, and our commitment, as I mentioned, to the bargaining units was, if, over the past number of years, if you agree to suppress the salary levels, we can make sure that we fund our stabilization so that we can try to retain and maintain current staffing levels throughout a recession. So essentially, maintain current staff levels, reassign staff where we need to keep them working and tackling new challenges, fund only the critically necessary municipal functions. Obviously, our focus with our current staff is going to be on economic rebuilding, and we continue to do what we can to preserve the town's infrastructure. So those are essentially the very simple objectives, and largely translated into tread water for 12 months. I will say that we have no expectation that this is the last time we'll be visiting this budget. We will be looking at this budget every week to make sure that we actually do have the revenues to sustain what we have proposed for expenditures. And almost on a day-to-day basis, I'm comfortable with our revenue projections, or not comfortable with our revenue projections. So it's going to be one of those years. Certainly, the summer will be one of those summers where we're going to have to be very sensitive to any changes in our local receipts, and very sensitive to what the legislature is doing in terms of local aid in Chapter 70 and 71. So that's essentially it. I will be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Are there any general questions from the public? Is there anyone from the public here that wishes to ask any general questions? I'm scrolling down my list.
Dr. Hunt is raising his hand.
I'll go to Dr. Hunt. Yes.
Thank you, sir. One question, I just noticed that there's a transfer to $46,000 to an energy fund. As Chair of the Energy Committee, I have no knowledge As Chair of the Energy Committee, I have no knowledge of what that is. Could you explain that?
That, yes, that's essentially, I don't have it right in front of me, but that's essentially an accounting transfer. We have solar credits that, that need just a transfer as they, as they come in. So I, I, essentially an accounting entry, book entry.
Sorry, to ask another question, please.
Yeah.
I mean that we have now a positive in the solar credits so that in fact we can use this excess solar credits for other funds? Or do we need to send that money out to other accounts in other places? In other words, it's a revenue stream now?
I, I would say correct. I believe it is a revenue stream at this point. And, and we've, I know have looked at the possibility of, you know, quote unquote, selling those credits to the district or to BSU or whoever might, might be in need of those. But I don't, I honestly don't know, I don't know the details behind it at this point.
Another point is that we will have significant additional credits once the LED lights are in. And that could approach easy $100,000.
True.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. President, point of information?
Sure.
Through you to the town attorney. The question I have is, at what particular point within this hearing, if there are going to be any motions to make any changes to the budget, do we, do we bring those forward?
You would bring them forward after the public's had their opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you.
And anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Have any, does anyone from the general public have any general questions regarding the FY21 budget? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of the FY21 budget as proposed? Anybody from the public that wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this FY21 budget? Anybody from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to the FY21 budget? I don't see any hands raised. So I will now go to questions from the town. I'm sorry. Is there a hand raised? No. I will now go to questions from my counselors and I'll refer to Counselor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. So what I'd like to do is make a motion to make some changes within the budget, and they're all interrelated. What I'd like to do-
Mr. President, at this point, we're doing a hearing. We're not hearing the legislation. I thought that's under legislation for action.
Well, that was part of, I believe, Counselor George's question. So he would like to make a motion to amend the budget. Is this the time that we make the amendment? Or do we make it under legislation for approval?
You make it under legislation for approval after the whole hearing is done.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's, that was my only question. Okay.
Right. Are there any other questions from the counselors about the FY21 budget? Any other questions from the counselors regarding the FY21 budget? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:34 PM. There's no need to take a vote. At this juncture, we will take a vote under legislation for action. Now we're going to go on to back up to D on the citizens' open forum. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Any citizens that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Let me see if I see any hands raised. I see Merrily Kenny Hunt, your hand is raised. I will refer to Ms. Hunt.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me see if I can turn it on so you're not just looking at a, okay. I'm real. I'm lying. I just remind you about the election on Saturday, which you probably remember, but I'm trying to remind the public as well. Our election will run from 10:00 in the morning until 4:00 in the afternoon. And when you were kind enough to set those shortened hours for us, at that time, Rainham was still running their full length of election. And I promised you that I would not announce the results of our election until Rainham closed their polls. Rainham Selectmen have now changed their hours to match our hours. So they will be closing up 4:00 as well. So if you hear an announcement at 4 o'clock, I'm not jumping the gun, but I'm staying with what I originally promised you. So I want to make sure that you were aware of that. To citizens and to you, Town Council, I would like to remind people that absentee voting and early vote by mail is encouraged to keep the, keep the numbers down at the election. We're running very short on time for an absentee application to be requested from us, mailed and returned to us. All things must be in by the mail or Dropbox, no later than noon on Saturday. That's when, the last time we're going to check the Dropbox and last time we will check the mail. So if people are returning that way, just be cognizant of that. The applications are available online. You do not have to ask us to mail you an application. You can get them online. You go to www.bridgewaterma.org/vote and all the information is there. Absentee ballots may be brought to the polls up until 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday by anyone other than the voter. Him or herself may not bring absentee ballot in to us, but anyone else can, a neighbor, a relative, even a minor can bring the ballot in. Confusingly, early vote by mail, absentee ballot, early vote by mail ballots may be brought in by the actual voter to the election, to the polling place up until 4 o'clock on Saturday. All that information is also at the website. So if it's confusing to remember it, go back to the website and look at it. We are asking all voters to come to the polls with masks on. A few masks for people who come without them, but we will be asking that no one go into the polling place without a mask on. We'll have hand sanitizer available at the door, asking for people to sanitize there, and we'll be wiping out the booths and the pens and the tabulators also if anyone touches the tabulator. That as it's used and also the auto mark. I think that's pretty much all I had to say. I, I don't know if the counselors have any questions. I'm happy to answer them if you do.
Thank you for the update. We'll see you Saturday.
Thank you.
I have Mr. Edivaldi next to speak. Just want to remind everybody too, citizens' open forum, if we have quite a few people up with their hands raised, if they could just try to keep their comments to three minutes. And just remember, this isn't an opportunity to have a dialogue with the counselors. It's an opportunity for you to address any concerns that you have to the counselors. Mr. Evaldi.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of you counselors for your service to the town. Appreciate that. So with the election coming this weekend, only a few days away, I felt it was important that citizens of Precinct 6 in particular be reminded of the consequences of this election, not only for their precinct, but for the town as well. With this being the only contested race for Town Council, it's essential that people be reminded of the situation surrounding candidate Wood. We must remember that the ability of any citizen to run for office, get elected, and ultimately serve as a town counselor is a privilege. And as such, requires an obligation of truthfulness, honesty, and integrity. If as a town we accept anything less from any candidate, we are lowering the expectations that we have for public officials. And we're opening the door for future erosion of our core values. The bottom line is that this race in Precinct 6 is really about ethics, personal character, and the charter. As a former three-term counselor and opponent of term limits as set forth and approved by the citizens of Bridgewater in the town charter, Mr. Wood knowingly planned in 2018 while serving in office and then exploited a charter loophole by resigning from the council in December of that year, only to pull papers to run again as a non-incumbent in this upcoming election. Although proved to be legal by the town attorney, Mr. Woods's actions run counter to the town council's acceptable ethical standards for individual behavior. When a current or former elected official deliberately exploits a charter loophole, for whatever reason, we should all be concerned. Throughout 2018 and 2019, leading up to the elections, Mr. Wood had publicly said that he opposed term limits. In fact, as a member of the council's Rules and Procedures Subcommittee, he actively lobbied to remove term limits rev up from the revised charter, contrary to the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee. However, the citizens of Bridgewater voted down the update and decided to keep term limits in place. In other words, the people had spoken. Mr. Woods's actions have not represented the highest ethical standards which the charter calls for. As citizens of Bridgewater, we should expect nothing but the highest standards from our elected or public officials. So when someone does something unethical or contrary to the will of the people, it concerns me, as it should everyone. To my knowledge, Mr. Wood, who I see is actually on tonight, continues to be silent when asked about his intentions and his behavior. I also understand that he's been offered opportunities to appear on BTV, but he's declined to make any public statements, which is a bit odd in an election considering what most people do when they run for office is to discuss the issues. The citizens of Bridgewater, particularly those in Precinct 6, need to know the seriousness of what Mr. Wood has done and as they decide how to vote. His actions are not in the best interest of his constituents, but rather for his own personal gain. I hope that the citizens of Precinct 6 will take this situation into account when they vote and decide for themselves if another candidate should be considered. Thank you.
Ms. Lauren Webb? Ms. Lauren Webb, your, your hand is raised?
Yes, thank you. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm sorry. I hope this is permissible. Thank you for hearing me. I made a comment during the budget portion, so I'll speak generally. Our nation and cities and towns across the country are having a dialogue about the role of police in our society. And I urge our, our town council to, to have that discussion in light of our budget, particularly related to the, you know, budget shortfalls that we're facing and depleting our, our town savings by a third when our, our police department has an overtime budget of $683,000. You know, in light of the effects of the coronavirus over the next year, I anticipate that the college will have fewer students on campus and in our town as they take classes remotely. And so I think that, you know, as we think about this budget shortfall and what's prudent to do for the, the community, that we have this discussion about the role as we make a commitment to reducing systemic racism in our community and in our society. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Any other citizens?
Mr. President, I see Mr. Brogan is actually physically waving his hand.
See, now I'm not looking at the screen. I'm looking at the blue thing. I'm losing. All right, Mr. Brogan, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. Steve Rogan, 36 Howard Street in Bridgewater. I wanted to first off, thank our town manager, Michael Dutton, and Town Counselor Mark Lindy for participating in the last weekend's Stand Up For Justice rally in the center of town. The rallies that have been going on for four weeks, fifth week is coming up this Saturday, and it's been a very positive socially-distanced event. And something that's connected to that is being on the Historical Commission. I run the Bridgewater Historical Commission page. And I want to let the town council know that recently I found a, found a document between Bridgewater, Massachusetts and Bridgewater, England. That was from 1846 and 1847 where Bridgewater, England was, was saying their stance on anti-slavery and I, well, I posted it on the Facebook page. It gained a lot of traction in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. And I shared it with Bridgewater, England's Facebook page. And I've since had two interviews with the DBC Radio. There's a good dialogue going on between our Bridgewater and Bridgewater without a N in England. They are considering to request to be a twin town with the town of, with our town of Bridgewater. It's something that I think it's a very positive. It's very positive for our town, and I just want to make everyone aware of it. And yeah, we'll gather more information and, and share it as I go. And if I just recommend anyone view Bridgewater Historical, Historical Commission's Facebook page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' open forum questions? Any other citizen wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Any other citizens? I don't see any other hands. So we'll move on. We do not have any appointments this evening. We do not have any licensed transactions. There are no presentations this evening. We'll now go to the town managers' report and start with item A, Mitchell School update.
Mr. President, the Mitchell School update is pretty short this week. The demo phase has begun. I think as, as I noted last meeting, the notice to proceed for the demo contractor was issued on June 1st. This week, they were installing erosion control as part of the process that's necessary. Also, the fencing installation should be in process. And the demo of the water and electrical service is underway this week as well. The actual building teardown, takedown will occur after the July 4th weekend and continue to approximately August 10th. It could be longer or shorter than that, but approximately August 10th. And as I've mentioned, also at other meetings, the architect is now working on the 90% drawings through August, and, and those will be submitted to the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, on August 28th. The 100% drawings ready for bid should be completed in October when the bidding will take place. And the award and construction of a construction contract and beginning of construction or notice to proceed will occur in December. And we're still anticipating a July 2022 completion, which gets students in the building and obviously in September of 2022. Project continues to be on budget or a little bit better than budget, although obviously the big, the big expenses have not been bid out yet, but, but that is, that is good news. And for those that are interested, the Mitchell School Building Committee does meet via Zoom. I believe the next meeting is Monday, the June 29th. And then there's another meeting Monday, July 13th. But anybody that wants more information on the project can find it at www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com. And all of the historical information, all of the past meeting information is on there. And certainly it's a font of information. So that's what I have for that, but happy to have, take any questions.
Questions for the town, questions for the town manager regarding this council Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, Mr. Duncan, we're still on track with all our state filings and everything like that. Where it's, there's still the big game of Mother and May I, where we have to say, here's what we're going to do next, and then wait a month or six weeks to say, yeah, you can do that next, et cetera, right?
That is exactly what we're doing. The good news is that MSBA has reviewed all our submissions and had very little comment, and the comment they have had has been quite constructive. So that's, that's the good news.
Any other questions for the town manager regarding the Mitchell School update? Seeing none, I'll move on to the CARES Act and FEMA funding update.
The CARES Act, obviously, for those that, that don't know, or most people know, but for those that don't know, the CARES Act, it was a federally, federal law which funded about $150 billion for local coronavirus relief. In Massachusetts, the act allocated to all of Massachusetts about a little over $2.6 billion. Did I say 150 million? Well, 150 billion nationwide, but allocated to Massachusetts cities and towns, 2.6 billion. Plymouth County, out of that amount, received 90 million locally to, to directly benefit cities and towns. And, and the county is a long story, but the county chose to administer those, those funds. And the county, it's a long story, but the county chose to administer those funds rather than have the state administer those funds, which was essentially a political decision, but so be it. The county, as part of their new sort of grant process, allocated the first quarter of that money into the buck, into buckets, essentially one bucket for each Plymouth County city and town. And they allocated that money by population. So the town, I believe, was allocated somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.2 million for its COVID expenses. So we draw off that when we apply for CARES funding. The process, we apply to FEMA first for whatever is FEMA reimbursable. Not all of the expenses that we have incurred are FEMA reimbursable, so we have to keep careful track. And then FEMA also only covers 75% of those expenses. And for those that have been through a hurricane or a bad snowstorm in Bridgewater know that the FEMA reimbursements only give us about, well, give us 75% of our expense due to that crisis or due to that hurricane or blizzard. In this case now, the remaining 25% is fundable through CARES, through Plymouth County. And as I mentioned, CARES will also fund expenses that aren't otherwise eligible for FEMA reimbursement. So our process, once the FEMA application is completed, we immediately submit the 25% balance for reimbursement through CARES, through Plymouth County. And for this month, our objective is obviously to clean up as much of those expenses that we've incurred in FY '20 so that we don't have any outstanding free cash issues after the end of the fiscal year. So I will add that CARES Act is intended, or at least through Plymouth County, is intended to reimburse for any expenses that we may have right through the end of December. So unlike the fiscal year funding that you're used to and some of the cash flow things that we have to be attentive to, CARES does reimburse right through the end of December for expenses that we incur. That said, we've submitted an application to FEMA last week for reimbursement for $287,544, which represents 75% of $336,716 of expense. So that, the balance of that that FEMA will not cover was included in our CARES Act funding, which also went in last week. And our initial request was $114,716. So that's essentially where we stand. Plymouth County has been quite helpful in outlining what is reimbursable, what is not reimbursable, and we continue to work pretty closely with them. But that is essentially where we stand. We can, obviously, FEMA, if we incur any FEMA-eligible after, you know, between now and whenever, as long as we continue to be in a state of emergency, that's, those are reimbursable expenses through FEMA. The expenses that are reimbursable through CARES are also, you know, available to us until the end of December, at least as currently designed. So that is where we stand at this point, but I'm happy to answer any questions about that, too.
Any questions from the councillors to the town manager regarding the CARES Act and FEMA funding update? Any questions at all? Well, I do. I have a couple of questions. Okay. Mike, I just want to clarify that, so you requested reimbursement to FEMA for $287 and Plymouth County for $114, close to 400 grand, okay? Those are expenses that have been incurred, correct?
Absolutely.
So in all those expenses incurred were incurred within the operating budget of FY '20? Or are any of those, they're not in any of the transfer orders that are coming up? And is, so all those are incurred expenses and were incurred within the operating budget of FY '20? Am I correct?
I guess the short answer, well, actually, Tony Solomati is on, so if Tony has a more thoughtful answer than I can give, I'll defer to Tony.
I'll try, because I'm not trying to mince words or not respond to your direct question, but these were expenses that were related to items that weren't budgeted for. So PPE, additional computers for remote work. So here's two examples of things that we didn't budget for, but we in fact had to incur an expense in order to maintain the safety and well-being of our employees and to continue the operation. Both are eligible. The PPE is a simple example of what's eligible for FEMA. The computer isn't FEMA-eligible, but that's eligible for CARES. So from an accounting standpoint, we established a department within the general fund, and we identified it as emergency response. And we received notification from the Department of Revenue on how we would be accounting for these. We established two special revenue funds, one called FEMA, one called CARES. We reclassified those expenses that related to FEMA into the FEMA fund, and the expenses for the CARES into the CARES fund. The good thing about the CARES money is we're going to receive that before the end of the fiscal year. So when the CARES fund, we will have, we will not have a deficit. In the FEMA fund, we will in fact have a deficit at the end of the year, because we will not be able to collect those funds until approximately a year out. So that's the accounting for it. So the budget-to-action reports that you will receive for the month of May and June will no longer have those expenditures there. They will be put into those special funds as per the Department of Revenue.
Okay. So let me just rephrase the question, because we didn't have a line item for these things. So obviously, they're going to have a deficit because we didn't have, we had a zero balance. But we have been able to incur those costs with the revenue that has been generated during fiscal '20. There's never been a cash flow issue because of these expenses. We've been able to pay for these expenses within FY '20 revenues then.
No, no, no. To be honest with you, they have, once someone designates this town and the state as an emergency or a disaster, you are authorized to deficit spend typically, and these expenditures you would not incur. They have nothing to do with the revenue that you set at the beginning of the fiscal year. They are new expenses that you did not budget for. They were never budgeted. They were never part of your equation. Then we get the instructions on how you're going to account for these special expenses. We were advised to put them in a special fund. They're not reflected in the general fund now. They're not part of these transfers. None of these transfers offset those deficits. None of that takes place in the FY '20 budget. None of it. We are then required by law to raise on the recap a portion of that deficit, like we had to with a snow and ice deficit of over $900,000 several years ago, and we will be able to allocate that deficit over three years. Normally, if we were getting those revenues back from FEMA, we would have no deficit balance in those particular funds. That's the proper accounting. The revenue in the general fund for FY '20 and the expenses in the general fund for FY '20 are not connected to any of these amounts.
Okay. I'm sure we'll talk about this again. But any other questions to the town manager regarding FEMA money, FEMA or the CARES Act funding? Seeing none, I just want to remind everybody that items for the next meeting that you would like on for the town manager's report, either let him know now or you have time to contact Anne to let her know what items you would like on the agenda for the town manager to comment on in our next meeting, is July 7th.
Mr. President?
George?
Yes. Mr. Dutton, if we could get an update on the Broad Street project for the next meeting, that would be great.
Happy to.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
Mr. Dutton, I understand it was a power failure at the Academy Building, and the backup systems failed. In next month's, in next meeting, could we get an explanation as to what exactly happened and why?
Okay.
Anybody else? Remember, you can still contact Anne anytime between now and the time the agenda is released to put stuff on for the town manager. Moving on to discussions, we have update status of order to abate local meals tax. I guess I'll recognize Council Fitzgibbons, who sponsored this, or councillor?
Actually, I'll take it, Mr. President.
I just wanted to give an update to the town, what transpired after our meeting, because we made it sound like we're going to have a special meeting to discuss it. Things developed. I just think we owe the public an explanation as to what happened. I'll refer to councillor George or councillor Fitzgibbons, whoever.
I'll defer to Mr. George.
Okay.
Okay. So to let everyone know, after our meeting, Attorney Rawlins reached out to the Department of Revenue to kind of talk through and get guidance in regards to basically what we could do, what we couldn't do, and things of that nature. What he learned, there were some roadblocks that were put into place, but the most significant one that really derailed the intent was we would have had to had the, I'll say, the order approved through the process and submitted to the Department of Revenue by May 31st in order for it to be active for the months of July, August, and September. This was, we started talking about this in the beginning of June. So from my perspective, and I reached out to councillor Fitzgibbons as well, it did not make any sense for us, because if we had gone through the process the earliest, and Attorney Rawlins, to keep me honest there, the earliest we could have implemented is in October, which was well after what we wanted to try to capitalize in regards to the summer, trying to help the restaurants get up to speed. So at that particular point, we felt it wasn't necessary to move forward with it.
That's right. For DOR collection purposes, regardless of when it became effective for us, they work on a quarterly collection timetable. So for their collection purposes, you all, it doesn't matter if you accepted it the day after May 31st. It was going to not become effective for their collection purposes until October 1st. So now you have up until, if you want to do it for October 1st, you would have up until August 31st to revoke. And once that order went into effect, for our intents and purposes, I would submit it to DOR. DOR would then be able to update their tax rule. So it's a lag, regardless of when we implement it, just based on how they collect. So how they implement it at the state level is different than when it goes into effect for our purposes.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. There's no committee reports tonight. We're now going to go into legislation for action. We're acting under Order FY 2005-8, the End of Year Transfers. At their meeting held on June 9th, 2020, the Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this measure. The Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting held on June 9th, 2020. This measure may be finally considered this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve, and there's a second. And there's a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr., sorry, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Next piece of legislation for action is Order FY 2005-9, the FY 20 End of Year Transfers to Old Scotland Links Golf Course and Transfer Station. At their meeting held on June 9th, 2020, the Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this measure. The Finance Committee voted 3 to 0. The Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval and added the term "transfer station" since it includes that at their meeting held on 6/9/20. This measure may be finally considered this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus? Mr. Fitzgibbons? Nine in favor, none against?
We're now acting under Order FY 2006-0, Acceptance of a Gift Parks and Recreation. At their meeting held June 9th, 2020, the Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of this measure. The Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting held on 6/9/2020. This measure may be finally considered this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Don't move.
Second.
The motion ends a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we're now acting under D, Legislation for Action, the Actual FY 21 Budget Orders. At their meeting held on June 9th, 2020, the Budget and Finance Committee and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 and 6 to 0 respectively to recommend approval of the following 2021 budget order. Budget orders. These measures may be finally considered this evening. We will take these orders one by one. Each one will require two-thirds vote. We'll start with Order FY 21-001, the FY Annual Town, FY 21 Annual Town Budget.
I just have a question for you. Why does it require a two-thirds vote?
It's what's on my sheet here. That's what it says on my sheet.
I'll have to open up the charter. I don't recall it requiring a two-thirds vote, but I will let you know. I'll open the charter now and take a peek.
There's a transfer from stabilization included in the operating budget?
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
Sorry.
Thanks, Anne.
Yep.
All right, so Anne, what are you charging for legal rates these days?
More than me, that's for damn sure.
No, she's not going to answer that one. Thank you for the clarification. So that's why we need a two-thirds vote this evening. It's right, it's not a normal majority tonight, and that's because we're usually using free cash or stabilization money. So we're acting under Order FY 21-001, FY Budget Order 21 for the Annual Town Budget. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
There's a motion. Is
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr.?
I think I made the motion, so I have the privilege of speaking first, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, so as you said, the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees both unanimously approved them. And I think the town manager said, we really have no idea where this budget's going, and it's really just a, let's make sure we have a number on the book so that we can pass DOR muster. Thank you.
Mr. Chase, did you have Mr. Chase, did you have a comment?
No. I will say thank you.
Mr. George?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make some amendments to the order, please. Amendments would be as set forward stabilization fund. I'd like to amend that amount to $1,698,003.2. Other financing sources totaled $4,558,487. Within the bottom sentence, the sum should be $60,194,911. Going to 292 total VR Regional District, 2.0 expense. I'd like to amend that number
It's going to where?
To the expense line.
Expense.
2.0 expense. Just to explain why I'm making these amendments, as counselors that were on the council last year recall, we did approve a budget for our assessment, but the assessment number that we had approved was not the number that we had agreed to in regards to the district's amended ask. In fairness, they, they asked for money, and I don't know if we've ever been able to honor the original ask, but we did have an agreement that we would have the amended ask. After the budget was voted and approved, it, it became apparent that the number for the assessment was, was short. The amount was $135,329. In the July meeting, we were able to do a supplemental budget and be able to get that $135,329 to the district. At that particular meeting, I made the statement, and don't recall getting any objections from any counselors, that in the fiscal year 21 budget, that total amount, both from what was in the operating budget as well as the capital appropriation, would be the starting point for the fiscal year 21 budget. And then whatever the increase we could afford, that would be the case. So basically what I did was I take that, I took that total all in of $28,783,798 times by 2.92 to come up with the numbers for the expense, and then it filtered into the other numbers as well for that particular increase. And the increase is approximately $138,630.
Okay, thank you for the motion and the explanation. We need a second to continue discussion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
It's seconded by Mr. Rushton for discussion. I'll refer to Counselor Fitzgibbons.
Oh, no, I just asked Mr. Rawlins, can we increase revenue estimates from the town manager at the budget?
No, you, you can't increase without a corresponding decrease somewhere else in the budget. So if you're going to increase in line item, it has to correspondingly decrease somewhere else. I couldn't follow Counselor George's because I'm looking at you all on the screen, so I'm not looking at what he's taking out or adding in, but he'll need to show.
Maybe Mr. Rawlins, if Counselor George and I could just have a back and forth for a second and you can listen, and then, and then you can let me know because I'm not against the idea. I'm just worried it can't be done.
I agree.
George, what you're, what you're essentially trying to do is increase the top line of the budget to be a certain revenue number to increase the expense to the cost of the school or what we're going to allocate to the Bridgewater-Rainham School District based on, as you discussed, your, your assumptions on where we were this year, last year, and whatever. But essentially, we're taking more out of stabilization to create more revenue in the budget to pay an extra expense. Is that what, is that the intent?
Correct.
Okay. And so then I defer to Mr. Rawlins again.
Yeah, I don't think you can make that increase in the budget without a corresponding decrease.
I don't understand that.
Can I, can I try, Mr. Rawlins, and you, you correct me if I'm wrong. And I don't have my charter in front of me because like you, I'm looking at everybody.
Yep.
But I believe that the charter reads that the town manager is in charge of submitting what the revenue number is.
Correct.
And increase that revenue number at this point in the process. And to, to take money from stabilization is to increase that revenue number. If someone can, you know, I'm, I'm looking to the only lawyer in the room because Ann's not unmuting, but, but that's my understanding. If someone can tell me a different way to do it, I'm happy to listen, but.
Yeah, I, I agree. Correct.
All right, I'll refer to, thank you, Counselor Lindy. Do you have a question?
Uh, yes, I, first of all, I'm going to second that motion.
It's already been seconded, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. So my question is, the South, the Rainham part of the school district, as we talked about, funded it at a different level, correct?
Right.
So I'm, I guess through you, Tashawn, is that the point in making this adjustment?
No, no. If, if, if we, and Mr. Salmonte can correct me on this, if we had agreed to go to the level that Rainham did, that number would be a heck of a lot more than what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
That's, and that's, that's not, not the intent of this. And also, I'd like to make the statement too, that, you know, with this increase, if it can be done, obviously, there's some operational things that have to be addressed. This would not, this would not have any impact in regards to the 64 teachers that have already been laid off. This is just from my perspective to give them a number that was, that should have been based on the all-in number versus what was done. That, that's my point for this whole thing. But I'll look forward to the discussion. If it can't be done today, then obviously I'd like to have some discussion at the appropriate time and when this can be done.
I think for the annual budget, I think that the town manager submits his budget with the revenues. The town council then has the opportunity to amend that budget by increasing line items within that and decreasing corresponding line items with that or decreasing period. But I, I don't think that the town council has authority under the charter to increase the top line of the budget through movement from the stabilization fund. I think that is within the purview of the finance team and the town manager when they submit the budget. So obviously, you can do supplemental appropriations thereafter, which I think is what you did last year. But, but I think you're increasing the budget here.
We are. We are, we are increasing the budget, and I certainly understand what Counselor George is, is doing. Here's my take on, on this, is that through, through the budget process, you know, again, there was some sort of, someone got lost, something got lost in the shuffle because we were under the impression, as we were building our budget, that what we had put in, the 2.9% increase to the regional school district, was in, we were always under the impression that it was in agreement, it's fine, Rainham's fine, blah, 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 and they would put in the corresponding amount. So, yeah, we're doing our, our work on the Budget and Finance Committee going through the process. We even had a presentation at the council meeting regarding that, and the town manager told us that 2.9% is, is fine, Rainham's fine with it, and so forth. So now Rainham goes ahead and, and budgets a higher number that puts our 2.9, making it sound like, making it look like we're not putting enough money in. So I can understand why we, you know, why they chose to do it like that. I don't know what happened or where the loss of communication became. So I, I understand what Counselor George is doing. I don't see why we can't vote this tonight. And the only reason why I say that is because if the finance team is against it, then I could see them not wanting us to do it. But if they can make it work, then I don't see why we can't vote it now. But if we can, but if we can, then I think that I would encourage Counselor George to put in a, a budget resolution for our July meeting to appropriate X amount of money from, from the stabilization fund.
That's what I think, procedurally, unfortunately, that's what I think we have to do because I think the budget has been submitted. An increase, there has to be a corresponding decrease. I'm, I'm, you know, just using, you know, one plus one there. And certainly, if you make a supplemental appropriation, that's going to go through the Finance Committee and get voted on in the normal course. So I, I think that's the process if you want to do what you're proposing at this point.
Yeah. And, and just to make it clear as well, and, and, Mr. President, I appreciate your remarks, my intent is not to try to get closer to Rainham's allocation. My intent is just use what I feel is the correct number on top of the increase. So with listening to Attorney Rawlins, and it makes sense in regards to my intent is not to move money within the budget, that was not my intent. I will withdraw my motion to amend. And to your point, I will work on with the town manager a supplemental budget to get that money over into the district. Thank you. And I think it needs to be seconded.
End of second. I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so the motion has been with, the amendment has been withdrawn and there's a second. Any other discussion on the withdrawal? We don't need to vote on that, do we? No. Okay, so now we're acting under the budget order where we do have a motion to approve and a second, and will, this does require a roll call vote.
Can, can we have a little bit of a discussion?
Oh, we want a discussion on the main budget. Sorry, right, right.
Really quick, I just want to ask Mr. Salmonte, what, what are you going to be doing? Because I'm not confident in any of the revenue numbers. How are you going to be monitoring whether we're heading close to those numbers or whether we're cratering those numbers? And then how do we respond to that as we move forward this year?
We are monitoring our revenue numbers weekly so that we can determine whether or not we're seeing a slowdown. Right now, we're seeing a slowdown in our motor vehicle excise tax payments and our real estate tax payments. So we're going to be looking at that very closely. The town manager and the finance group and the assistant town manager, we have already talked about what other steps we may have to take in order to adjust in the first quarter. So we're very tentative on these revenue figures, and we're watching it very, very closely.
So is it, is it your intent to hold back as much spending as possible in July, August, September to really see how things start to materialize?
Especially on the expense side, we'll be watching discretionary spending.
And, and so you could be coming back to us at the end of July and, in, you know, in theory or beginning of August and say, hey, you know, it looks like we're doing really poorly. We've got to cut, you know, 5% from the budget or whatever that you, you'd think is appropriate at that point.
That's the type of, that's the, that's the type of paying attention we're doing. And yes, we anticipate there, there could be some significant adjustments. We hope not, but we're playing for the best, excuse me, playing for the worst, hope for the best.
And, and what is your, what is your best scenario? Can we, can we expect higher revenues than you've projected?
Uh, no. I, I, again, the town manager stated, and I'll confirm, we started the budget process with a budget resolution planning on 1.25% in reserves at the end of the year. That's part of our wiggle room. We, we, we're looking for a break even, and if we came in at a half a million dollars in surplus, we'd be very, very pleased.
Okay, so I, I just, and I'll conclude now, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank you and the town manager for being willing to dip into the stabilization fund the way you have as, as we started this whole process at the beginning of March, when all of this started coming down, you know, we realized it was raining and we had a rainy day fund for a reason. So I certainly appreciate you guys' creativity. Thanks.
Any other discussion items? There's a motion and there's a second to approve the FY 21 annual town budget as presented. Any other discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Now we're acting under Order FY 21-002, the FY, the budget order FY 21 Water Enterprise Fund Budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Is there any questions regarding, any discussion on the Water Enterprise Fund Budget? Any discussion on the Water Enterprise Fund Budget? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a quick one. Mr. Salmonte, when are we going to start to see expenses from all the capital that's going to be coming through the water and sewer department?
The capital program you're referring to coming in for the.
You know, DEP, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. We, we will, we won't see those starting to hit until probably late FY 21, early '22.
And, and then that'll be budgeted as part of the rates.
That's correct. A dead service.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the Water Enterprise Fund Budget? Seeing none, it does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Now we're acting under Budget Order FY 21-003, Budget Order FY 21, the Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Don't move. Second.
There's a motion and there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under Order FY 21-004, Budget Order FY 21, the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Budget? Counselor Fitzgibbons?
I think we saw we're transferring money into the Transfer Station to end this year so that it doesn't run a deficit and we don't run afoul of DOR and having funds encumbered, et cetera. Mr. Salmonte can probably explain that a lot better than I can. But I will ask Mr. Salmonte, what's, what's the outlook for that? We can't continue to support, we can't support enterprise funds out of general tax revenue forever. And I'm going to ask all the same questions about the golf course as well. So I, you can answer the Transfer Station now and then wait for the golf course when it comes up. Thanks.
Transfer Station rates were increased right before the pandemic. We are seeing some, some healthy revenue given, given the fact that there, there is, and it was a major pandemic going on. So we're, we're going to see how this year flushes out at the end of the year, and we're going to watch the first quarter of next year to see if those rates are going to cover what we had for a, a funding source this year. I think it was around $40,000 to $70,000. So that's our plan at this point in time. There's a longer plan of restructuring how we're billing those who take advantage of the Transfer Station. And clearly, we'll have to do that in the first quarter of this coming year.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Budget? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under order FY 21 005, budget order FY 21, Old Scotland Links Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second, any discussion on the Old Scotland Links Enterprise Fund Budget, Council of Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, and, and just if Mr. Solmonte, in addition to explaining how we're transferring money at the end of the year to the golf course and why it's important, I, I'd like to answer that question first. But secondly, um, you know, explain what, what the estimated impact was of the pandemic on revenues and what that would have done to the transfer that we had to do. And then uh, explain why we can't get COVID, we can't get CARES Act reimbursement for that revenue we clearly lost.
So, so the answer to the first question, we had zero revenue in April versus last year of around ninety thousand. And I'm just looking at one of the line items. So if I was to compare uh, all of the line items, let's just say overall, we had about uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars swing in April and we had about a fifty, sixty thousand dollars swing in March. So there, there you go, there's two hundred and ten thousand. May didn't open right up on time. We were able to get close to last year's numbers, so we're only down four thousand. I think a lot of folks needed to get out of the house and so the golf, even though all the carts weren't being deployed at the time, and that's a revenue stream for the golf course. And we're seeing uh, with the weather we're having, we're seeing a, a solid play and we think we're gonna make June's number. So when I did my first esti- estimate, I, I thought we'd meet fifty percent of, zero of April, fifty percent of May and fifty percent of June. So it looks like we're gonna be very close on the May and um, hopefully uh, we'll, we'll get close on that June. So you can see by the, the, the one fifty and then roughly the seventy-five thousand, this two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars uh, that we lost in revenue, in the uh, revenue for rounds. The other part of the revenue that we're losing in June that we will make up in July is all the outings. So typically there's a weekly outing that occurs and because we could not deploy all the golf carts necessary for the outings, we lost that revenue. So that's another revenue stream of approximately runs about fourteen to fifteen thousand dollars for one of those events. So you're talking about again, another fifty to sixty thousand dollars in revenue. So if we were up and running and we had made rate increases last year, we anticipated we would be broke, or we would break even in FY twenty. So that's the answer on why we needed two hundred and fifty thousand uh, dollars. The other, the other uh, aspect of it, we are getting some CARES money for the cost of the additional staff that we needed to deploy to ensure uh, social distancing and we're ensuring that on course, uh, we had extra rangers, we had parking lot attendants, we had golf carts being cleaned that didn't have to be cleaned. Those, those salaries are gonna be reimbursable. Under the administration of CARES, I had the conversation with the um, Plymouth County and in no way due to the disruption of our operation and the need to maintain the integrity of the asset, which was the argument I made, when I said we had to keep people employed, we had to employ them, we had to expend what we needed to expend to maintain that asset. Um, they said that that was not covered under CARES and that they would deny that. So that wasn't submitted. There is talk
There's no way to get revenue back that we should have gotten or would have gotten.
There is a, an inkling of talk. And it's all gonna be dependent upon how much of the CARES money is consumed through the cost, uh, the um, allowable costs that, that the county is seeing. We're not in, we're not incurring based on what we're doing right now. We're, we're not really eating into the one point two million dollar allotment. So we're, we're gonna get some reporting to see what other communities are, are actually getting reimbursed for. So why do I say that? There is talk of that if these funds are not fully expended, that some of them could become eligible for lost revenue. If that was the case, then we would then take advantage of that. But at this point in time, there is uh, no um, formal decision to allow the CARES monies to be used for lost revenue.
And, and so were we to get uh, quote unquote, unexpected CARES money, we'd put that back in the general fund to repay what the golf course owes us from this year from bailing them out.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussion on the Old Scotland Links Enterprise Fund Budget?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. George?
Drew you to Mr. Solmonte. So Tony, I understand, um, let me take a step back.
Took a big step back. That was dramatic. He fell off the bridge there, at the Golden Gate Bridge. Sean, you froze, you froze on us. Does anyone else have a question while Sean's making his way through the fog?
Well, uh, uh, is, is he back? I'll keep back. So, and then I think this is more just for my edification and, and people's edification and I don't even know if you have this, Mr. Solmonte. But I'd love to see a, a lifetime history of the um, of the Old Scotland Links Golf Course and essentially from birth through now. So we, we voted to, you know, buy the property as a town for so much money. Here was the bond we paid, here's the revenues that we generated, you know, each year. Then we built the clubhouse and, you know, here's what it cost and et cetera. Just to, just to see the whole history of it because, you know, you can get caught up year to year, um, but, you know, over the long term, has it been something positive or not? And then also, i- if you could, and this calls for a, a little bit more speculation maybe than maybe you're prepared to do, but were that land not uh, kept for a, a recreational purpose of golf, but just sold to uh, developing, uh, what types of expenses we might have included, incurred, uh, given a reasonable sized development uh, of that land and the houses and the children, the calls to the police and the fire and the ambulance service that we would have incurred? I know it's a big ask, but I figure you have some time.
Oh yeah, you have plenty, we, we, we have, we have plenty of time. Council George is back, you wanna continue with your question? You froze out on us, yep. And you're muted, you gotta unmute yourself now.
Hopefully Comcast won't cut me off again. So Tony, the, the question I had is this in general, so, and I'm gonna oversubify it a little bit. I know in the, in the payroll protection program, a business could apply for uh, uh, three months of their salary plus rent, utilities, you know, insurance, things of that nature within their business to, to recoup those expenses. I'm just a little curious that with Plymouth County in the same, and I'm assuming this is what you did, while the course was shut down by state mandate, we still had expenses that we incurred.
I agree.
And so just in general, not that I'm trying to, you know, go after people, but if Plymouth County says no, is there any other avenue to get clarification? Cause that does not make any sense to me, it wouldn't be an eligible expense. It wasn't a decision on the town to shut the course down, it was a state mandate. I don't know if you have an answer to that, I'm just putting it out.
Real quick, they have jurisdiction over the dispersment of those monies because the CARES Act, the federal government uh, distributed the funds to that, the county. To, I think, answer your question, we can re- reach out to the uh, uh, those who are applying to the state to see if they were handled, uh, treated differently. Um, and I will certainly do that. Other municipalities have golf courses and we can look at uh, how they were able to take advantage of CARES money uh, directly through the state. So we, we, I can definitely look into that one. Uh, Council Columbotus, did you have your hand up? No anymore, okay. Any other discussion items on the FY 21 Old Scotland Links Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under uh, budget order FY 21 006, Authorization of Revolving Funds.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second, any discussion on the authorization of revolving funds? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under budget order FY 21 007, Community Preservation Act Reserve Accounts for FY 21. Entertain a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second, any discussion on the CPA reserve accounts for FY 21? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Uh, excuse, I feel like you might have to make an amendment?
Is there an amendment?
No problem.
Did the CPC offer an amendment to the reserve accounts that needs to be voted in?
No, I do see the order, I have lines through it.
So I, I, if I could, I think the uh, the order is presented in your packet is uh, is with the uh, proposed changes from the, from the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, so I'll
It would require an amendment to reflect uh, what's in your packet.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Do we, can we have a motion and a second to approve as amended?
Move.
There's a motion and there's a second to amend it as written. This does, any discussion on the amendments? This does require a roll call vote.
All right, all right. Sorry. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Good, so the amendments have been approved, we're now acting under the main motion, which we do have a motion and then second for, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Acting under old business now, our ordinance FY 20 007, zoning ordinance, adoption of codification zoning ordinance. It is the intent that this measure will be withdrawn. Is that the intent?
It is.
Is there a motion to withdraw or do we need to vote on that?
No move.
Second.
There's a motion to withdraw and there's a second, any discussion on the motion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just a quick question to the town attorney, uh, does this implicate any timeframes for when anything in this could be brought back?
No, not if you're just withdrawing it procedurally.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Acting under B Order FY 20 050, Home Rule Petition, Town and Bridgewater Charter Amendment, Counselor Term Limits. After meeting held on May 14th, 2020, the Rules and Procedure voted three to oh to recommend approval of this measure. I will refer to the um, sponsor of this, Council Loesch, if she has any comments?
I don't have any comments, I just wanted to um, confirm that it was staying on this level if it wasn't being referred out to anyone else. I guess that question is for Council George.
Okay. Is, is there Is there a motion to approve this, bring it on the table for discussion?
Oh yeah, I'll make a motion to approve for discuss, well, I'll make a motion, yes.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve this or to bring on the table for discussion, I'll refer to Counselor George.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. So um, as it says, this was brought to the Rules and Procedures Committee with voted three oh uh, to recommend approval. What I'd like to do, I had a discussion with Attorney Rollins, what I'd like to do is turn it over to him to explain uh, basically what's going, what we need to do uh, to move this, potentially move it forward. So Attorney Rollins, I'll turn it over to you, if that's okay?
Sure. Uh, so under the Massachusetts Oh, Counsel of Fitzgibbons, you wanna comment first before we hear from the attorney?
Procedural question first, what was the date of the first reading on this?
April 7?
April 7, April 7.
All right, perfect, I apologize. I couldn't scroll down fast enough.
Counsel, uh, Counsel Rollins? Uh, yep, so basically uh, after um, this went into Rules and Procedures, uh, we dug into the Massachusetts uh, Constitution a bit more on amending our charter. Prior to me being involved or taking over as town attorney, uh, we had always gone through uh, the Special Act because we frankly uh, have our own form of a, of a charter commission, uh, which is kind of a body that takes a look at potential charter uh, amendments uh, when making um, amendments. So in this circumstance, there is a caveat carved out um, that goes beyond the typical just two-thirds uh, vote um, to change or amend uh, a charter and that caveat is, is carved out under the Massachusetts Constitution that basically says, any change in charter relating in any way to the composition mode of election or appointment or terms of office of the legislative body, uh, the mayor or city manager or the board of selectmen or town manager shall be made only by a procedure of charter revision set forth in section three. So what we've always done in practice in this town, uh, when we're dealing with something that addresses those issues as this one does, um, is we've gone uh, through a kind of a hybrid process based on the way our charter reads. And that's the re- the recommendation comes from the Charter Review Committee. The Charter Review Committee makes that recommendation to the town council, the town council votes on it and then we put it before both the legislature and the voters. And the reason for that is with the form of government we have, we do not have attorney general oversight as to our ordinances and amendments. Um, so what we like to do is get kind of the belt and suspender, we like to have it blessed by the state legislature so we know uh, that they find it to be accurate in, in compliance with the law. And we also typically have things like this blessed by the voters of the town, uh, in particular when uh, you as a board are voting on potential changes to um, appointments or terms of office. So that, that is my recommendation, that it go through the procedure that we typically take with these things, uh, and as we took with the last uh, set of changes because I think that covers every conceivable uh, base uh, that we need to. So that was my recommendation. base that we need to. So that was my recommendation that this not go forward as if it's simply an amendment, you know, based on a spelling change or something in the charter. This is something of substance. So it should go through a formal process. It should probably be voted on and it should get the blessing of the legislature because we are changing terms of office for the legislative body and you all are the legislative body making that determination. So that was my advice to Counselor George.
So so I guess my my question would be if if we didn't have the Charter Review Committee in place right now, because it's not always in place, it's it's a it's a time, it's a periodic committee.
Yep.
We wouldn't, you know, it's just convenient that they happen to be, you know, meeting now or and if they weren't, we could, we could continue with this and just vote on it ourselves and send it to the legislature.
Yeah, I think I would, I think what I would probably have you do if that was the context because again, you are the legislative body voting on the change in the legislative body. So I think I would again, even if if that were the circumstance and we didn't have to go through because there there is, I don't want to get into too much detail, but in other forms of town government, they actually go through electing a charter commission. That charter commission is made up of nine people that are elected. Those nine people then have 10 months to make the recommendation on this. So there is a very in-depth process. We, I think under our charter, we would be okay if you all voted by two thirds, it went to the state legislature and then it went to the voters. I think we're still covering all those bases, but I think we're fortunate in that we do have a charter committee going right now and we really can cover almost every base procedurally based on our kind of different hybrid form of government. We have a form of government that's actually unique and doesn't fit within every mold. So that that was my recommendation.
Okay. Counsel George, should you follow up?
Yeah, what I'd like to do is I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to refer to the Charter Review Committee. The seconded. Any other discussion? Counsel Lind, you had your Lindy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, just a quick question. Going through the process that Town Counselor Rollins outlined, how long would that process take? Are we talking like more than a year, years?
It it can take a while to get through the state legislature. As everyone recalls, last time, it took quite some time, even if even if we put it together, when I say we, I mean, the town manager, the town council clerk, I take a look at it and we get it submitted to the state legislature. They do not act quickly on these things. So yeah, it can take a little while before it gets back to the voters and back to you all.
Thank you.
Counsel Colin Baudes, do you have your hand up?
No.
No, okay. Any other questions to the motion and there's a second to refer to the Charter Review Committee?
Just to comment, it's Counsel Loesch.
Yep.
The the intent behind this was to kind of have a discussion and make things very clear in a in a process that has currently been rather muddy. And to to Mr. Lindy's point, we did this about six years ago and we're right back at it again. So we could be looking at this once, you know, my my kindergarten is graduating from middle school. But I hope if the council, excuse me, if the Charter Review Committee has any questions about my intent, I'm just looking to make this clearer and that we avoid any additional confusion or issues as we move forward.
Thank you. Again, this is just, we're not chiming in whether we even agree with term limits or not agree with term limits. We're just sending it to the Charter Review Committee to have them send it back. Counsel Colin Baudes, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would just take some exception to Ms. Loesch's comments. It's not just, it is actually changing the substance of the language to to remove that word consecutive. It isn't just clarifying it and not without changing the meaning. But I think it is a substantive change, but.
I'm not disagreeing with that. That's why I proposed it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this has been motion and the seconded to go to the Charter Review Committee for further review or come back to us with other recommendations. Any other discussion? This does require a roll call vote. Counsel Fitzgibbons?
Just a real, I mean, the Charter Review can look at whatever they'd like. We're just sending them this and say, hey, could you look at this too, in addition to everything else you're looking at?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure, and I'm sure they will look at this. Anyway, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Is he still here?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Baudes?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we're acting under new business now. Some ordinances that need to be referred out, ordinance FY 20 009, general ordinance, amend the administrative code, Article Two, Section One B, and Article Three, Section One I, that's sponsored by me. I'd like to just, I'd like to entertain a motion to refer this to the Rules and Procedures Committee.
No move. I'll make the motion.
There's a motion and there's a second to refer it to the Rules and Procedures Committee. Any discussion? I I'm just going to say, oh, go ahead, Counsel Fitzgibbons.
No, I think you're saying exactly what I was, what I was going to ask you, which is what's your intent of the of the article?
My intent of the article is, again, this is not a charter change. This is simply a rule, our administrative code change. My intent here is to kind of loosen the strings, if you will, a little bit about the participation in our local government, particularly on our volunteer boards and committees. I think that there are several people that have tried to step forward to serve on more than one, I don't mean to use the word, I don't mean to mean this in a derogatory, but like a lower, you know, a simple committee to serve on that doesn't pay anything. It's a volunteer. When you have, when you have an individual who's a non-voting associate member of a committee, but yet wants to serve on another committee and they can't because of the administrative code, I think we need to take a look and loosen that up a little bit to allow that to happen. And it even goes further to maybe even allow a town employee whose contract does not state otherwise, if they if they want to serve on a committee, they kind of should be able to. So I'm putting this discussion forward. I'm sure it'll go to committee. I'm sure it'll be reviewed, amended. I just want to get the discussion going. I think it's, I think it's okay for someone to serve on more than two committees in the town. As you notice in the language, I always hold the, the now finance committee, former advisory board member that I was when I got started, I hold that committee, the finance committee in a high regard, as I think every town does. So I do kind of exclude them as if that's the committee they serve on. I think that's the committee they should stay on. So I do exclude them. So these are just my thoughts. But the bottom line, the intent here is to allow citizens that want to serve on more than one voluntary committee to do so. And I expect it to be discussed, changed, amended or whatnot, but I wanted to get the discussion going on that.
And if I may very, very quickly on this, just whoever committee it does go to, make sure you reach out just in regards to the conflict of interest laws because there are, you know, we just have to make sure that whatever you guys craft for the admin code fits within whatever the conflict of interest laws are as well.
Right. Okay.
That's all we have any for.
Oh, God.
She knows what she's doing.
Yeah, I am. Okay, so this does require a roll call vote to refer out.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Baudes?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one against.
Order FY 20 062, acceptance of a gift, Bridgewater State University. I'll refer to the town manager for explanation. Oh, it's a big amount, big amount.
Mr. President, this is is a gift that the BSU has made over the last number of years. It is $55,000, which gets divided three ways among the police department, the fire department, and our roadways department. And it is usually expended for capital purchases by each of those departments.
And I'll entertain a motion to refer to the budget and finance and finance committees.
No move.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion on referring it out? Mr. Colin Baudes?
I would just like to thank the university, although it might not seem like a lot. I know the university's finances are going to be really hurting this year. And so for them to continue with this.
Yes. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Baudes?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, one against, none against, sorry.
Okay, we're acting under order FY 20 063, acceptance of a donation for Central Square. I'll refer to the town manager for brief explanation.
Mr. President, we got, we're the recipient of two checks for a total of $1,000, two $500 check, money orders actually to go towards the upkeep and maintenance of the central square through the parks and recreation.
It'll entertain a motion to approve or a motion to refer it to the budget and finance committees.
Second.
There's a motion, the second to refer it out. Any discussion? Seeing none, although this requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Baudes?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, we're acting under item D, resolution R FY 20 010, a resolution supporting COVID-19 state funding for school districts sponsored by Counselors Fitzgibbons and Gallagher. Refer to Counsel Fitzgibbons for explanation. Do you want to?
Sure. You know, I, we have a regional school district and they're funded very, very differently than town school districts a lot of the time. And, you know, to me, the state cannot, cannot, not fully fund Chapter 71, the transportation numbers, which they always, which by legislation they're supposed to, but they don't. That's okay. It's not okay, but we understand that they do that. They can't, you know, impose special education mandates and require the district to pick those up as well and then apply more mandates to the district. I think we need to send a message to our legislative team that if they want to impose more mandates for COVID safety, which is important to all of us, the state has to figure out a way to pick up the tab and not the district. Sorry, I got a little passionate there.
That's very good. So this is just for first reading. This does not need to be referred out. We will just keep this on the agenda and bring it back for our July 7 meeting in which we, at that point, can can adopt it and adopt and support the resolution. Any other discussion on it? No. Okay, we made it through the night. Now we'll go to citizens' comments. We still, we lost three. We got 26 people out there. Are there any citizens out there that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of the meeting? I see Carlton Hunt waving. So I will refer to Mr. Hunt first and then we'll go to Ed Ivaldi.
Thank you. As a member of the Community Preservation Committee, I wanted to point out that because you had to go through several amendments, it was caused by a process process error in executive office. Basically, the town Community Preservation Committee was not provided the annual account estimates before it was put before you. And according to the master law and my understanding of interpretations by DOR, that has to come from the committee. So we're more than happy to work with the town, but in the future, we would appreciate that the town does not put these things on your agendas until we have voted on it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ivaldi? You still there?
I am, yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
You hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I want to thank you for your actions on the charter update item that you had there. I think you made the right decision. I was questioning that in my own mind, why we're doing things twice. So I thank you for doing that. Just a point of reference, Attorney Rollins had mentioned, the last go around took almost four years. I think it was three and a half years through the special act process, which I find a little interesting because the first time that we went through this, when we adopted our charter, it only took three months. And the reason, the big reason for that is we had our state rep and our state senator pushing this through the legislature. So if we can sort of get them on board with our next update and get them to push this through, we can shorten the time dramatically. The other thing is, I guess I was surprised I did not see anything on the agenda tonight regarding the citizen feedback process. I thought that was going to be on the agenda. And then lastly, just as a footnote to my earlier comments, I just want to say that I'm fully aware that there are some people that simply do not think that candidate Wood is in the wrong. I believe that some of you even sitting here tonight on the council may fall into that group. To be honest, I find that somewhat astonishing and even even a little appalling. After all, Mr. Wood was making his plans to exploit the charter loophole as a sitting town counselor back in 2018. That in itself is a violation of the ethics article in the charter. Why is that never discussed? I do have faith, though, that the citizens of Precinct Six will err on the side of reason and choose the candidate that has integrity, honesty, and a desire to put the will of the people first. Thank you very much.
Ms. Hunt, I see your hand is raised. Ms. Mary Lee Hunt?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes. I am not speaking as your town clerk now, but I am speaking as president of the Bridgewater Improvement Association. And I, I think it's fine that money was given for the maintenance of the common, but I do want everyone to just be aware that the common is fully maintained by the Bridgewater Improvement Association. We pay for the people to mow it, water it, plant it, take care of it. That money was given to us by Flority Little years ago. It's invested and and we guard it carefully. We take care of a few other things around town, not as many as we used to. But for years, we did all the, all the landscaping and maintenance around town. So just keep that in mind. If the plan's on doing something on the common, it would be nice to have them at least consult with us and our landscapers before they do it. Thank you.
Any other citizens that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? I don't see any other hands raised. Go down my list here. Nope. Okay, we'll move on to council comments. I'll start on my far right, as if I were sitting in my chair, and start with Mr. Sousa. Is he still here?
I'm still here.
There you are.
Yep. They just took my picture away, so I couldn't see myself.
Yep.
All right. It's been a very tough few months for us and we've all made it through with some losses, some gains. And I'm hoping that very soon our meetings can come back into the town hall downtown. And we could somehow, even if we don't have a large audience there, have these types of meetings, even if it's just a council and a few other people in the room. I think it makes a little more interaction, little, I think, a little more caring or something about just the way the meetings are done. That's all I have to say.
Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I really would just like to wish everyone a very happy and safe Fourth of July holiday upcoming and. And I'll just repeat, as I have in past years, that I think it would be very wise for all of us to refrain from the use of fireworks. Obviously, as I'm sure you're all aware, fireworks are illegal in the Commonwealth for possession and use by unlicensed persons. And there really are a great number of injuries and a lot of damage that results from the illegal use of fireworks. And during this particular period, we're in a drought condition. You know, all of the woodlands are really very, very dry. And I, I would certainly hate to see any tragic circumstances arise. So for what it's worth, that would be my suggestion to everyone. Thank you.
Counselor Lindy?
Well, I just want to thank you, Dennis, for running a good meeting, long, but involved and important. I wanted to commend the Rogans and others, BCCR, for the Stand Up For Justice programs that have been happening on the common. This will be the fifth week. Of course, it's also Election Day. But there's all sorts of discussions that have come out of this. I had the privilege and honor of being a speaker. I want to thank our town manager for also being a speaker and the other two were great as well. It's important to speak up now and be noticed and be supportive. If you, people do notice, there was support at the beginning of the speaker series for both the police and the people out in the community that need to be treated the same as all of us. I just wanted to thank you folks for the honor and privilege of serving. And I hope to be back on July 7th with all of you.
Thank you. Counselor George? You're muted. You're muted.
You know, I, I gotta have Michael Dutton's Wi-Fi connection tonight. I apologize. Just a couple of quick things. I, I do want to also agree with Counselor Colin Bodas's statement in regards to Bridgewater State University being able to come up with or to, to give us another gift. Even in good times, good economic times, the university in the past did not give us the gift. So it makes even a bigger impact, I think, to the town in some very dramatic economic times that the university still sees it upon them to, to give us that money. So I appreciate that. And also with, we're getting donations for Central Square. Whoever's sending them, thank you very much. I don't even know if we know who they are. But I think that also brings to light the continued kindness that I see within the community, people in need at the private level, at the public level. You know, I, I do agree somewhat with Counselor Souza. You know, we've made it through to this particular point. There's probably still a lot more work to do with this pandemic. It's going to be an ongoing thing for a long time. But I think if we continue to work together, we can overcome the challenges from that perspective. And I think to what Mr. Dutton said too, in regards to the budget, even after all this is done, this is going to be an ongoing exercise in regards to monitoring what we have for expenses, what we have for revenues, with the hope, even though hope is not a strategy, that we'll be able to make it through, keep, we'll say everything whole moving forward. And then with the hope that the economy will come back. And hopefully this time next year, we're just talking about revenues, expenses.
I think he's done. I think he's done. Counselor Rushton?
He's met us a lot of times for the evening, apparently. I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I, I did want to comment on how proud I've been to be a citizen of this community and, and watch some of the gatherings in towns over the last several weeks in the center of town. Not only the people that have showed up, but also public safety folks. I, I think that Chief Del Monte had done a really fantastic letter outlining the steps Bridgewater Police have taken over the years, not just recently, but this is systematic due to leadership and has put them in a really fantastic spot with our community. And I just hope that maybe he could work with the town manager to, to make that document public. I, I think more than just the town council needs to know, you know, what local public safety staff has been doing over the years. And with that, I, everyone have a great Fourth.
Thank you. Counselor George, did you want to finish?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when is the Comcast contract up? Because my Wi-Fi is killing me. Thank you.
They'll get another one and they'll get another one. Anyway. Counselor Loesch?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, we go to Counselor Colin Bodas.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Counselor Fitzgibbons? Where'd he go? There he is.
I just want to, I just want to give a shout out to our town clerk, Merrily Hunt. I've been, I've been, you know, looking at the early voting because we've never done this in town before. And the numbers I got from Jolie just yesterday was 363 people have asked to vote as of, as of yesterday across the town, which is great. And, you know, that's 363 people who won't have to go out and, and go in to vote and, and do whatever they need to do, that, that these votes are going to be, be counted. Obviously, if they get them back on time, as the town clerk indicated. But just a shout out to her office for doing that. Also, you know, to all my fellow counselors, you know, the budget's always the toughest meeting of the year. And, you know, I think everyone did a very good job tonight and I appreciate all of you. And as I say at all of these meetings, Mr. Gallagher, thank you for managing this meeting so well. It, it, it's, I'm sure, a very big challenge to do it on Zoom like we're doing. And I appreciate your efforts on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Just some final thoughts for tonight. You know, I, I hope that when we do meet on July 7th, as Counselor Souza has indicated, that we can meet in person, but I don't, don't bet on it. I think we'll probably still have to meet July 7th via Zoom. But if there's any, anything develops and we're able to meet in person on July 7th, I would like that simply because that will be the night that we do reorganize the council as far as the leadership goes. And I have already asked, I've asked our town clerk, Merrily Hunt, to, to be prepared to do the reorganization even via Zoom. Also want to take, take a moment to everybody that hasn't voted to go out and have an opportunity to vote. Vote on Saturday, 10 to 4. I am not one of the 363 people that voted already or will vote. I will drive there and go inside with my mask on and vote in my precinct. And I wish all the candidates luck that are on the ballot. Again, wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Unfortunately, this will be the first time in a long time that we have not had a parade or, or our own ceremonial fireworks. But there's still time to get your T-shirt if you haven't already, to put an order in or see if they have any left. I've got one on order to help support our Fourth of July committee. And hopefully they'll be well-funded for 2021. And on the Fourth of July, which happens to be a Saturday, it's a perfect day for the Fourth of July. And we're not going to have a parade of fireworks on a Saturday. But get out there and support your local businesses that weekend in town because I'm sure they'll be open and, and ready to, to serve you at their, their restaurant. So we do not have any executive session this evening. Again, our next meeting is on Tuesday, July 7th, where we will reorganize and entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move. Second.
Everybody jumped at that one. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Let's just stick around.
Mr. Lindy? You're muted.
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colin Bodas?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against?
Happy Fourth.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone.
Everybody be safe.
Be safe, yep.